Before the meeting today, we had a work session where we had a presentation from Nassau Langley and another presentation from Newport News Williamsburg Regional Airport. Both interesting presentations, and we'll make sure that we get those out. A lot of good information. We go ahead and start the meeting. We'll start with our invocation, pledge allegiance, and Vice Mayor Freeman will lead us in our prayer.
Let's bow our heads, please. Dear Lord, we ask for your guidance as we deliberate our agenda tonight. We ask you to be with our council member Raven Hall and his wife Joan, who is in hospital right now. Ask you to take care of our military and others that may be serving our nation overseas. In Christ's name, amen.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's start the meeting out this evening with a special presentation, and I'll ask Mr. Ray Yen Lo of the Coast and Lions Club, and do you want the Lions Club to join you as well? The members that are here?
I don't know, I don't think they're...
Yes, they're all... Look at them! Yeah!
Ryan Carey?
All right. If all the lions are going up there, if you'll excuse me for a moment.
We'll let you stand with us even though you don't have your yellow shirt on.
I was gonna wear my yellow suit.
On behalf of the charity foundation of the Lions Club in the southeastern area of the Commonwealth and the Lions Club of the City of Pecosin, we'd like to present this check to the city to reimburse it for the ice that was used during Hurricane Irene. And just a little bit to help, wish there was more, but you know how things are, Mayor.
Thank you very much, and thank the Lions Club as we all, as y'all fill those gaps. I know I've been to your club meeting before, I've talked about what it's like to be the mayor of the City of Pecosin, and know that organizations like the Lions Club are standing right behind us. And we really appreciate what you have done here, how you've helped the city, how you've helped the city through the most recent hurricane, but this is not the first time that the Lions Club has stepped up to the plate to help the City of Pecosin. And we appreciate it every time that you do, whether it's a small project that you've done for us in a pool or a park, or it's a major recovery effort from a hurricane. We know that you're with us, and we appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Give me the camera, and you guys, you can be in it.
Okay, and again, we thank the Lions Club for that, and I guess at this point in time, we'll have an audience for visitors, and this is an audience to talk about anything except for the public hearings, which we will handle one at a time, so if you have an issue on any subject, feel free to come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll move forward into the approval of the minutes, and I'll, if we could get a motion on the regular session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the minutes for the regular session of September 12th, 2011.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. I don't think there'll be any comments or concerns with those. Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
I abstain.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Steen.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of four to zero with two extensions.
Okay, and the work session?
Mayor, I move that we adopt the minutes for the work session of September 12th, 2011.
Mayor Suckett?
Suck.
Motion made and seconded. Judy, please.
Councilman Krieger.
Steen.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
I abstain.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of four to zero with two extensions.
Okay, thank you, council, and I guess we are now at the first public hearing. And the public hearing tonight, the first one, is an ordinance amending Article 11, Village Commercial District of the zoning ordinance, and this will be the first reading. Andy?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Wine will present for staff. He presented to staff at the Planning Commission and has also been the lead staff, working with Debbie and I and others in the preparation of this draft ordinance. Kevin?
Good evening. Good evening. I prepared a PowerPoint presentation for you all outlining the specific changes and why we feel those changes are necessary. Bear with me while I bring this up. All right, the first public hearing for y'all tonight will be for changes to Section 11 of the Village Commercial District. The changes consist of the following: We would like to reintroduce the residential component as a secondary use within the district. It was originally a part of the 1995 adoption of the original Village Commercial District. It was taken out, I believe, in 1998. We want to introduce primary residential as a component with a conditional use permit issued by City Council. We would like to make minor language adjustments to the conditional use permit standards. We wish to overhaul the development review process for properties within the Village Commercial District. And lastly, include financial institutions as a permitted use within the district. Here's the Village Commercial District. You can see in the middle there the Pecosin Municipal Library, star there, it's the gray-beige area. To the west of it, going towards York County, you have the Research and Development District, which takes up the rest of the Big Woods area. To the north, you have that purple, which is General Commercial. Then you get into the B2 Commercial District, which is the red there, and to the south, you have R1 Residential Single Family. All right, the purpose of the Village Commercial District reads as follows: The district is intended to encourage the establishment of a village center by permitting a variety of commercial, office, and limited residential uses in order to create a center of business and economic activity consistent with the locational advantage and prominence inherent in the Big Woods. The first amendment is to reintroduce the residential component. Originally, like I said, when it was first adopted, the Village Commercial District included this language: Apartments above the ground floor as secondary uses to primary commercial and office uses. Currently, we would like to introduce the following language: Residential dwellings above the ground floor, second to primary, commercial, and office uses. Residential uses shall be limited to no more than one floor above the ground floor. Essentially, we're limiting it to the second floor of any building built within the district. The purpose of this is to restore the Village Commercial to its original intent. It was supposed to serve as a mixed use. Right now, mixed uses are not permitted within the district. In the intent, in the original language, at least old staff reports, the department foresaw this district as being similar to the likes of Hilton Village in Newport News or Merchant Square in Williamsburg. We're talking not really a downtown district as much as a light downtown district, something very small and villagey. The second amendment, we would like to introduce primary residential uses as a, with a conditional use permit. And this would read as follows: This is a completely new section, and would be Article 11 dash 2, 11 dash 3.2. The following uses shall be permitted upon the approval of a conditional use permit issued by City Council: Residential dwellings above the ground floor and subsequent floors as a primary use, provided that the ground floor consists of permitted commercial and/or office uses; and for staff and city purposes, primary would constitute 50 percent or more of available building square footage. And this will allow for slightly larger mixed use developments in the district. Residential uses will not be allowed on the ground floor at any time, and more than one floor may be allowed, so second and third floor essentially. All approvals will be subject to council-imposed conditions. For city purposes, like I mentioned, a primary use will be considered a use that occupies more than 50 percent of available building square footage, and development size will still be limited by district height restrictions, which in this district is 40 feet. Another amendment will be getting rid of the word "limited" in the district's intent. This will facilitate the inclusion of primary uses. Staff proposes to strike the word "limited" from Section 11.1. I read it to you earlier here in the presentation, but it will read as follows: The district is intended to encourage the establishment of a village center by permitting a variety of commercial, office, and residential uses in order to create a center of business and economic activity consistent with the locational advantage and prominence inherent in the Big Woods. The development review process, this is an interesting section. We've really just wanted to overhaul it and update it. Presently, the section requires developers to schedule a meeting with the Planning Commission Development Review Committee. That doesn't exist, so instead, we altered that language to make developers go before the Development Plan Review Committee, which consists of staff that completes development review and familiar with development review in the city. They would go before that committee instead of a committee that doesn't exist. We've also added an additional section to this development review process, requiring any application which would require a public hearing, such as a zoning, a rezoning request or a conditional use permit, to submit an application for the Architectural Review Board at the beginning of that process. This would help us streamline the process and conduct it in a timely manner and not waste the developer's money if a development, say, isn't approved by the ARB. We would also like to make some language changes to Section 11 dash 3, conditional uses. These are minor. The first one, subsection A, will read: All traffic impacts shall be mitigated at the expense of the developer as deemed necessary by the city manager or his or her designee. I want to note that there was a lot of conversation about this at the Planning Commission meeting last week, primarily about deemed necessary by the city manager or his or her designee. The constitutionality of that was debated. Ultimately, because they have to get a conditional use permit, they have to go before you all, so there was no constitutionality issue there, as deemed by the city attorney in later conversations. Subsection B, very change, very insignificant change, but it will allow some leeway. The proposed use will not conflict in architectural scale or style to existing development in the district. And the purpose: We will allow developers to mitigate any traffic impacts they make within the district, instead of restricting them for making, for creating impacts. And also, we will not limit development strictly to one style, and we would allow several styles that are similar in scale and will not conflict in each other. Ultimately, in a pseudo-downtown area, you don't want every building to look the same, but you want them to be compatible, and that's what we hope to achieve with this section. And lastly, include financial institutions. We believe it was just an oversight when it was originally adopted, so we want to include that. Don't really see a central business district working without them. And we have some comments from the Planning Commission and the city attorney. This is in regards to Article 11 dash 3.1. We did not recommend any language changes to this. This stemmed from the meeting. We took their comments, along with some by the city attorney, and we wanted to alter that intro to the conditional use section. Currently, it reads: City council may approve as a use, a conditional use, only if it conforms with the following standards and criteria. We took that language, and we thought that "only if it conforms" was a little strict and exclusive, so we've thought we would propose to you all: City council may approve a use as a conditional use upon consideration of the following standards and criteria. And the purpose of this change was to allow the section to be less restrictive on developers while allowing developers to compromise with the city, if possible, on these issues instead of being strictly prohibited because of them. And the city attorney made an interesting point, that currently it reads that a conditional use permit can only be issued because of those four, instead of allowing us to impose other restrictions on them if necessary. So he's okay with this change, kind of spearheaded by him, so that is to y'all for discussion. Now I can answer any questions or address any concerns you may have.
I have a couple of them. Under number nine, we talked about residential. It says residential uses shall be limited to no more than one floor above the ground floor. If I remember right, though I wasn't on City Council at that time, the Rind Road project, I think we were going to allow three stories, a total of three stories, counting the ground story as one. And I wonder why you limited to a total of two stories. And the other thing is, why not any residential on the first floor? This Village Commercial concept looks to me to be like a small Port Shippensburg or Port Warwick type development.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I know that they, in fact, have some residential on the first floor. You know, the thoughts for changing the Planning Commission rules on those, I don't understand that, or I'd like to know that.
Well, I've worked at several jurisdictions now, and downtown areas, and like I said, this is kind of a light downtown, we're proposing, villagey, they thrive with, with commercial or office buildings on the first floor. Perhaps we could look in the future, once we get the district up and running, to allow residential on the first floor. But we feel it's very important to keep it now as a district that is primarily a commercial and office center and destination, to allow residents who propose to live in the district options for shopping and whatnot, make it a pedestrian-friendly development. So that's something that wasn't discussed much in the drafting of this. I think it's important just to get residential back in now, as opposed to going full-fledged with personal developments.
You know, I just don't want to see it so restricted that it might not fly if there were other considerations.
Apparently.
Though I would never consider even proposing to go to a place like Port Shippensburg or Port Warwick, I think some of those places are fairly neat.
And they are, they are.
And there are some people who would want an upper floor because they feel safer, they're not accessible directly from the ground, but there are some people, when they get to be at these places, don't want to go upstairs and take elevators.
Very true.
And so having a choice for those particular areas to have a first floor, okay, or a seventh floor, and I don't want to see high-rise buildings in the City of Pecosin, I'll tell you that right off the bat, but apparently, after much deliberation, we were going to allow at least three at one time. We drew the limit at three, we weren't going to go to four, and I didn't know why three wasn't included, so just some thoughts, okay, and some consideration.
And I had, I had circled the same thing, asking why not two floors above the ground floor for residential? If you're going to have a third floor, I would want it to be residential, I would think. And your point is well made about allowing some of the residential being on the first floor for people who, you know, might not be able to go up and down the stairs or elevators. So I wonder, can you get three stories in 40 feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Then that would be...
So that wasn't an issue. So, yeah, I don't know whether saying no more, you know...
If I could, don't mind Kevin?
Not at all.
What we were trying to do, and you could certainly change it, but our philosophy was for a secondary use. We're talking about what's by right as opposed to what should be subject to the full public hearing and conditional use permit process. And starting, as Kevin said, from zero, we felt that a secondary use of less than 50 percent might be the appropriate level for by right. And beyond that, multiple-story buildings and in buildings where residential was the primary should be subjected to the full public process, the public hearing process, the Planning Commission process, so that these sorts of buildings of this scale that will affect community character are subject to the full public review. And you could probably change it to still say secondary space, but you could allow multiple floors, or you could scrap our underlying assumption altogether. And if I could, one other thing to think about, and you certainly could change this as well, but I think we were sensitive. Our understanding of why the change was made in the late 90s to the ordinance was of concern that this might disperse traditional apartment buildings, and the idea of having apartments above first-floor office and resident, or retail, or something that would support that, is that these are different than traditional apartment buildings, the kinds of things that we've seen recently that I think we all like in other localities, serve as a model. Certainly doesn't have to be the model we choose, I mean, that's why we chose it.
Kevin, could you go back to your slide of 11, 3, 2A? I think it was a definition of residential, or what would be allowed? Do you have that, Kevin?
Let's see. Said 11 dash...
11 dash 3, 2A.
11 dash 2A.
Yeah.
The traffic impacts?
No, it's residential, what would be?
11, 3.
11, 3.
Okay, the primary condition, primary residential?
Yes.
Or conditional use.
With this conditional use permit.
11, 3?
11, 3.
Yeah. It's kind of hidden in there. Says residential.
That's it, right there. You got it?
We got commercial.
Residential, right there. It's this page right here. Okay, yeah. When I first saw that, I thought it did not match what was in the actual motion that we have.
It doesn't.
Well, the motion is correct. If there's anything incorrect in the PowerPoint, that would be my fault.
All right, so what is in our packet is correct, or that's correct?
It doesn't match that.
Right, so which one? Oh, I know, it's dwellings above the second floor is what we have in our...
Oh, and that's how it should read.
So not ground floor?
Not ground floor, second floor.
Okay.
I apologize.
That's one mistake, Kevin.
Okay, other questions before we open the public hearing?
I had some definitional things and stuff that didn't change, it's just a close reading, but I can talk to Kevin about them.
Either one?
I can talk to him later.
And I had one more concern with 11, 3 dot 1. Recommendation has been made to change that the city council may approve a conditional use only if it conforms with, following certain standards and criteria, and to remove the "only if it conforms with" to simply say "upon consideration of." And in my estimation, that's giving a little bit too much leniency to city council. I think that having the criteria and standards should be here, if we're going to have criteria and standards, they should be followed, and that the wording should say as much. So the fact that you simply have to look at criteria and standards, but then you can pass it anyway, concerns me. And Wayne's not here to address the legality of that, but that's my concern.
I understand your concern, I think it's, you know, it's a good thing, but in that counted, the definition of a conditional use is when it doesn't meet the exact standards, so somebody can come to council, kind of like an appeal.
No, the list of the conditions that it should meet are the ones that's saying that if it meets these, then you can give it a conditional use permit, like it...
I thought Tracy, with the city attorneys changing the wording from "conforms" to "under consideration," it was only that you had to follow these four, plus others that the council came up with, and not "is limited."
I was reading it as, by changing it to what he said, that it means you simply have to look at them, not you have to follow them. "Upon consideration of" does not mean follow these rules, it means look at them and think about them, but don't follow them.
Well, I think it's like Kevin says, you can make it more restrictive, or you can make it less restrictive.
Well, I think the restriction...
And that's what a conditional use is.
Right, and I think that the restriction comes within the standards and criteria. That's where we should make it restrictive or less restrictive, but I think that we need to restrict city council to following a set of standards and criteria. That's, so that's my concern. And I don't know, I haven't had a chance to speak with Wayne about that.
I think the idea is that we approve the conditional use permit, and what they're trying to do is make this more open to the developer, and we can either make it more restrictive or we can make it less restrictive. And I think under a conditional use permit, that's the way it should be. Otherwise, if you're going to list conditions that they've got to meet, what's the sense in having a conditional use?
Well, I think the conditions are pretty lenient. I mean, simply not a lot of noise. It's not even definitive, you know, what noise. It's about anticipated noise. A, you can't predict it, and B, there's no measurement anyway. So all of these standards and criteria are somewhat nebulous to begin with.
You know, again, Wayne's not here, but if, if, if you didn't change the writing of that particular phrase, we could, as city council, still change the conditional uses so that they fit. If someone came up with a use that was different that was already there, as city council, we could still have the same authority, as I understand it, to change the conditions under which we use it, and then it would therefore conform and do the same thing, whether you change the wording or not.
And, well, and for the public, I'm not sure that we had a slide that has this, but the four conditions are simply that the developer would mitigate traffic impact, that the proposed use would not be in conflict architecturally, that there would be minimal visual and functional conflict between nearby uses and the new one, and finally, that anticipated noise and congestion created would be comparable to other, other levels permitted in the district. So the, the conditional uses listed are, I don't think they're that limiting, and I think, I mean, I think they're good limits, and I think that I would like any city council to follow those, not simply think about them.
Or if there came up a reason why we should change one of those.
Right, if you want it to be louder.
As council, we could modify those.
Right. My problem is that the wording that is proposed says, "consider this," not "follow this." And I like the idea of following, knowing what you have to do, because otherwise, the standards and criteria are pointless. Why would they even, you know, we can look at them and then say, oh, none of them apply, we're going to break all of them, but we considered them, and that's my problem.
I agree with what you're saying, and understand what you're saying, but I don't think that we can sit up here and come up and cover every situation that may arise or that some developer may run into, and you just need to have an appeal process somewhere. And I think that that's what this is.
I don't really disagree with that either, but I think that these four criteria are very, they're barely limiting, and the limits that are there are...
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Tonight is the, is the public hearing and the first reading, okay? We've got some time for Wayne to come back and for us to perhaps get a read of why he has recommended the language change.
Right, I appreciate it.
And I don't think that there's any argument amongst council here about that there's some guidance or limits. It's going to be one of the two for future council to consider. So I would recommend that we just move forward with the public hearing as it is, and then we groom the language before the second reading and final adoption. Is that okay?
Yeah.
And with that said, I'll open the public hearing, see if anybody wants to speak in favor of or in opposition to, or any comment on the change to the ordinance for Village Commercial District of the zoning ordinance. And again, this is the first reading. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And Randy, would you like to...
I just wanted to make a suggestion, that if the council is at least considering the revised language that we just discussed, I would suggest you pass it on first reading to include that language with the sure knowledge that you can take it out on second reading. If you did it the other way around, and you decided you wanted the amended language, you might well have to have another public hearing.
I see what you're saying. So you're saying use the more restrictive language, or what is considered to be more restrictive?
The underlined parts.
Actually, what I'm suggesting is pursuant to the section that you just discussed, 13.1, there was discussion, and there will be some additional follow-up at city attorney. The current language in italics, the first, is what's in the ordinance now. So you have that as a default. If you incorporate the change, the second language, in first reading, then that is in play for consideration in your second reading. You can choose to...
Undo it.
To undo it.
On the second.
Or do it on second reading. Proving it on first reading doesn't in and of itself do anything except advance it to further consideration. If you were instead to take the current language and then subsequently decide you wanted to make that change, you would have to re-advertise that piece. So I'm not making a play for either language, simply from a process standpoint, including it in first read allows you to...
Okay.
Thank you.
And with that said, is anybody prepared to make a motion that we move this legislation forward? Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance by revising Article 11, Village Commercial District.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All right, further discussion from council?
I would just like to say now that I will vote yes just to go forward, but I will vote no if we don't change that to something more specific. So my vote yes is simply to move forward with the process.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Judy, please come through.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, the second public hearing tonight is an ordinance amending Article 1, general provisions, Section 1.3 of the zoning ordinance by adding definitions for age-restricted residential and financial institutions. Kevin, are you up again?
I am up again.
Welcome back to the podium.
And this will be more brief than the previous discussion. Essentially, we want to add to Article 1, general definitions of, general provisions, I'm sorry, Section 3 definitions, we want to add the definitions for age-restricted residential and financial institutions. First, we would like to define age-restricted residential as housing of all dwelling types, restricted for use by persons of 55 years of age or older. Housing provided shall be in accordance with Federal Fair Housing Act, Virginia Fair Housing Law, and Section 36-96.7 of the State Code of Virginia. It's important to mention that originally, going before the planning commission, this definition read as Federal Fair Housing Act and Virginia Fair Housing Law. We added the specific state code section that excludes age-restricted housing from being a discriminatory practice. It basically says that restricting housing to persons over 55 years of age is allowed. It's not a violation of the Fair Housing Law. And secondly, we would like to define financial institutions. A financial institution shall be defined as the following: the retail offices of banks, savings and loan offices, and other financial service institutions providing walk-in service to customers. Drive-through facilities are a separately designated and regulated component. Basically, we're saying banks, savings and loan offices are permitted, drive-throughs as a part of those facilities, those may be permitted as well, however, they are separately regulated elsewhere in the zoning ordinance. And I can answer any questions or concerns you may have.
I have another one.
Okay.
I apologize, we're going to...
Is that your question?
I'm holding it late. ATMs, I notice, are not addressed. Simple ATM that would be, and I was wondering about this in the Village Commercial, actually, because we approved financial institutions, would a walk-up ATM, not a drive-through, but a walk-up, should that be added to this?
That is a good concern, and we have not thought about that. That is something that could be easily added.
I would think it makes sense to add that.
Certainly.
Agreed.
So do I need to...
After the public hearing, I think you add it to the motion.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anybody has comments regarding the ordinance for Section 1, Act 3 of the zoning ordinance by adding definitions for age-restricted residential or financial institutions.
Can I ask one more question?
Can you hold one second? All right, seeing none, close the public hearing. And now you may ask your question.
Okay. You said under the financial institutions, that drive-through facilities are separately designated and regulated component, and I didn't see that in the definitions.
They should be a part, and Debbie, correct me if I'm wrong, they should be mentioned in the parking requirements of the zoning ordinance?
In a different ordinance.
Different law.
It's not going to be in that section. They're not defined.
But it's not, we don't define it in this definition.
That's correct, sir.
Oh, okay, okay.
Elsewhere in the zoning ordinance.
In fact, that's the ordinance that we just recently modified to say if you're already in an existing commercial district, and you're not bordering a residential district, you don't have to come back to council for...
Okay. So this, so my request to add ATM to this will apply to the ground floor of the Village Commercial. By adding it here or no?
No. This is a definition of banking institutions in the zoning ordinance, so anywhere that banking institutions would be allowed.
Okay.
Unless specifically delineated otherwise, it would include it.
Okay.
So it would be okay, and I think it's a great addition.
So with that, would you like to make a motion?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we add walk-up ATM to the part that's going to be between 37 and 38, the financial institution definition.
And make a motion to adopt the ordinance with those changes?
Yes, sir. Councilman.
Okay, motion made and seconded. I think we got it all over, Judy?
All right.
Okay, any other comments or discussion? Okay, seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, in front of the public's understanding, we'll have a second reading and final adoption at the next meeting, on both of them.
The legis will be in it. Make sure we got it right.
Okay, moving forward to new business, and I believe this is more of a housekeeping item. This is a resolution ratifying the adoption of ordinance 1015, which granted lease of publicly-owned property within the Public Works Garage Compound on Municipal Drive, and this dealt with the tower.
Yes, sir.
You want to...
Some move?
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, that we adopt the resolution ratifying the adoption of the ordinance. Any comments or discussion? Okay, seeing none, I will ask for a vote. Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And...
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, thank you very much, council. And comments of the city manager?
Mr. Mayor, I only have two things. I'm very pleased to say that this past weekend, we completed, our Public Works staff completed its first full sweep of the city to pick up storm-related debris. We are now picking up in the areas, a second time in the areas that are subject to tidal flooding, and if you are a person that had some storm debris in the other areas of the city that, for whatever reason, you have been unable to get out yet, we will stake that on a sort of case-by-case basis, if you'll let us know. Just an advance note to those that are calling, we are required to certify to the federal government for reimbursement purposes that what we're picking up is storm debris. So if it doesn't look like storm debris to us, we will ask questions, because ultimately, we have to certify to that. But having said that, if you have storm debris, don't hesitate to let us know, and we'll come by and get it. And also, we will be having, we will be back temporarily on our Saturday pickup schedule, which I believe is this Saturday here of our mobile convenience site. Then we will be off Seafood Festival weekend because of logistics, so if you've got a small amount and you can get it to us on Saturday here, Saturday morning at the municipal, or at City Hall, we'll be glad to take it here as well. And one other final note, I am very pleased to welcome to our community Dr. Lisa Summerston. Ms. Summerston, Dr. Summerston has begun, she is a practice here as a general practitioner. We've been after a doctor for a long time to come back to our community. We certainly have fond memories of the doctors we had in the past and long for the next generation to come. Ms. Summerston is practicing, she has hours in Pecosin Mondays and Wednesdays of every week. She is located at the Pecosin Family Medical and Chiropractic Clinic at 370 With Creek, and the office number, if you'd like to get in touch with her or their office, is 868-7709. And I promise that any other general practitioner that comes to the city, I will do an infomercial for them as well. Thank you very much.
All right. Bud, you got anything to say?
Yeah, a couple of things. In the spirit of one of my favorite presidents, President Kennedy, when he said something to the effect, "Ask not what you can do for your country, but what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country." Those people who have the ability to remove their own storm debris and clean their own ditches, you know, I encourage them to do that. We have a hard-working city staff, and they're small in number, and they work really hard, and we can cut down on city costs and help reduce your taxes by people doing what they can do for themselves, and so I encourage them to do that. And the other thing is, I would encourage citizens to support and thank the Lions Club for their generous offer of providing the funding for ICE during Hurricane Isabel, excuse me, Hurricane Irene. They do many good things for the city. Their eyeglass program is phenomenal, and I'd like to thank them, especially for their efforts and encourage the citizens to support them.
Jersey.
I was going to wish best wishes to Mr. Vernal and his, Dr. Vernal and his wife. And I did want to mention, the part of the problem in the Eastern Precinct with the debris pickup from the storm was that our city staff was so on the ball, they did the first trip before a lot of us were able to get out and cut the branches down, drag them to the front. So at least in my section of the city, I know that there's still some limbs down, and I wanted to assure the public that we will take care of that.
Good luck. Jerry?
Only thing I have is that people are still stopping me and talking about what a super job the debris folks are doing throughout the city, so just wanted to throw that out. And that's all.
Okay. Buddy?
Bud, just to remind everybody, the Pecosin Seafood Festival workboat races, October the 9th, will have an expanded presentation this year. The Coast Guard's, we hope, will put on a demonstration. We're going to have cattle corn funnel cake, moonwalk for the kids, so it's going to really be a nice family outing, so I hope everybody will come out.
Just one thing, Mr. Mayor. The Hampton Roads Partnership had a retreat earlier this month. I was unable to attend it, but I got a copy today of the summary from the meeting from Mr. Dickens. It seemed the main, one of the main areas is transportation, railroad transportation, not anything else. And I think I mentioned before how 2013, the state's going to have to fund all train traffic that is less than 750 miles, and there's no money right now in the state coffers for that kind of money outlay. And the legislative agenda that the partnership is thinking about putting forward is to increase the sales tax on car rentals at airports, raising it maybe three or four percent higher, will they say generate maybe 33 million more dollars, some of that figure like that. But, and I read this twice or three times, they don't want a tax, they don't want this tax to apply to out-of-state folks that are coming into Virginia, only to Virginians.
Interesting bit of...
I'll go back and read it a fourth time, but I don't think it's going to change.
I believe you summarized it correctly, Mr. Krieger. And there, do you mind if I follow on this?
No, go ahead, sir.
We did receive that today, and I forward on to Mr. Krieger. They are asking you, as you have been asked traditionally, to endorse their legislative program, but in my short time here, this is the first time that I recall that they had a specific tax increase that they're asking you to endorse. What they're asking you is one jurisdiction within their area, and every jurisdiction within the area, is to endorse the increase from 10 to 14% on the car tax rental, to send that up to the governor and the general assembly to advocate for that. That is sufficiently different than general statements about funding or priorities, that we both wanted to bring it up to your attention, because absent direction from the city council to endorse that, we will not be either A, endorsing it, or B, signing the regional endorsement of that. Was it, Mr. Krieger, the 24th or something like that, late in October?
Late in October, yeah.
Something like that?
It just seems strange, with all the people who are part of the partnership, that something like this was able to get forward.
I'll be surprised if the other citizens in the region support that.
Well, they want to add, if it includes light rail, for example, Virginia Beach and Norfolk would jump on that in a heartbeat, because light rail doesn't, you know, pay for itself.
When did they say they were coming to Pecosin?
Huh?
When did they say they were coming to Pecosin?
I don't think they'd be happy for Pecosin to pay.
Got you. All right. And Frank, thanks very much, and Randy for your follow-up on that. I think we all know that there's a major push for light rail, and I think what you hit on right there was that there's no money, and so they have to help find a source for that. And I'm not sure that, I think Randy hit it appropriately, that the city of Pecosin needs to jump into that fray. And I can understand, we've heard this kind of tax scheme before, where the citizens of Virginia are the only ones paying for it, so...
Well, the thing is, too, it's not just light rail, it's really the Amtrak, and you know, the trains that go out of from Newport News to rail service of all kinds.
Right, and I appreciate everybody speaking tonight. I'll tell you that we need to all keep Dr. Vernal and his wife Joan in our prayers. There's obviously a serious situation with Joan, and we wish them both all the best. In addition to what Councilman Green talked about is the workboat race, we also have a fishing tournament the Saturday before. I would highly encourage the citizens to reach out and look for these two events. They're both precursors to the main event of the Pecosin Seafood Festival, but I would encourage everybody to look at the workboat race a little differently this year. I think it's going to be highly exciting, and much more activity going on around it for the average citizen. So I think it's going to be a great time down there, and that's, again, the fishing tournaments on the 8th, the workboat race on the 9th. So... So please keep those two on your calendar. I'd like to express my congratulations, and we attended the insertion of Danny Diggs, who's our York Pecoson Sheriff, as the president of the Virginia Sheriff's Association. We really appreciate what Danny's done for the city of Pecoson, but as well, we recognize that he's moved into another leadership position within the Sheriff's Association of the entire And I guess, you know, one thing that I overlooked when I was getting on our soapbox about all the upcoming events, let's not forget about, it's a great show here, Mackenzie's 5K Run Walk, which is also on Saturday, September the eighth. So please attend that and support both that family and that cause, which has been started here in Pecoson. I don't have anything else. Yes, sir?
Two things I forgot. I attended the annual breakfast for the workforce development, and where they highlight what they've done for the year, and they've done some tremendous things for the community in workforce development. I think their service at the career cafes for high school kids has jumped to over 13,000 served last year.
Wow.
So that thing is a tremendous success, and it's used as a model all over the country. The other thing is, I attended the investiture of our new circuit court judge, Rick Atley, and I presented him on behalf of the council and the citizens, a Pecoson pin for the service that he does for our community.
Great. Thank you for doing it.
He's gonna be a great addition to the circuit court.
And our thanks must go out to new delegate household for bringing a York County Circuit Judge, which I think he was a big part of. Yep. So we appreciate that. And with that, I'll... We don't have a closed session tonight?
No, we do not.
So a motion to adjourn.
No move, Mr. Mayor.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. We adjourn this meeting, and Judy, please call the rule.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Krieger.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.